Okay, everybody, the hour of 7:30 is finally here. And it's, everybody who's gonna be here is here now, so we're gonna call to order this meeting, this studies, our study session for Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Member Exum.
Here.
Member Patton.
Here.
Member Plasky.
Here.
Member Fisher is here, and Vice President Hall.
Here. President Dimmitt couldn't make it this evening because of medical issues, nothing major, just routine stuff, so he wants to stay home, but he will be phoning in to speak with us later on when we have an exec session later on tonight. And he probably is watching on television as I speak.
Yes.
So, do we have any additions or corrections or modifications to tonight's agenda?
Yes, we would like to, we have an administrative appointment that we would like to move forward, 9.3.
Okay.
So they could get on the road in this weather and head on home.
Okay.
And that is the only change.
Right. Well, we'll do that, we'll move that to the first administrative report then, after, before 7.1. Do we have any citizens here tonight who would like to make a statement? Any citizens for citizen statements? No, if anybody does decide to make one, put it, fill it out on the, I have to do what John does, on the, on the golden rod sheet, and bring it to Lori, please. There is a call for an executive session tonight, after tonight's study session, for the purposes of collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, and also for litigation and action against affecting or on behalf of the particular district that's been filed pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the district finds an action is probable or imminent, which the case basis for finding shall be recorded and entered into the closed meeting minutes. But there will be no action, action taken after that exec session tonight. Do I have an approval of tonight's agenda, then?
Move approved as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Approved and amended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. And I also just want to say thank you, Austin Pontius, for coming out in this yucky weather tonight to record our video for the audience. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to our first administrative report, which would have been 9.3 on the agenda, which is the approval of administrative personnel requested.
Okay, I will invite Markeisha Parker up to the desk. Markeisha is Director of Human Resources, I think this is her first time before us. Welcome, Markeisha.
Thank you, good evening, it is my first time presenting in front of the board, and it is my pleasure. Tonight, I want to share with you, the role of Director Professional, of Professional Development has been vacant since December 20th of 2019. During the second week of January, the screening committee made up of certified teachers, building administrators, and district administrators viewed 11 applicants for the Director of Professional Development position. On Thursday, January 23rd, the Level 1 Interview Committee, made up of certified teachers, building administrators, and district administrators interviewed the six most qualified applicants recommended by the screening committee. The Level 1 Committee recommended two candidates for a Level 2 interview on Friday, January 24th, 2020, the Level 2 candidates were interviewed by the administrative team. Following reference checks and with input from both interview teams, administration would like to recommend that Kelly Truex be approved as the Director of Professional Development with an effective start date of February 10th. If approved, Kelly will be joining Urbana School District with the multitude of experiences in her 28 years as an educator. Roles have included being experiences in, I'm sorry, roles have, have included being a classroom teacher, interventionist, instructional coach, data analysis, principal, and currently Director of Educational Support Programs. As a data and instructional facilitator, she provided professional development on best practices at the school, state, and district level. Kelly's current responsibilities include managing title, preschool for all, prevention initiatives, and Illinois Empower grants. Being physically responsible with grant funds, Kelly provides support to principals with budgeting building needs. Through Illinois Empower, she assists building leadership teams through school improvement planning and implementation. She is a mentor for first-time principals and assists in coordinating district institute days and monthly professional development for new teachers. Kelly is the district assessment coordinator and summer programming administrator. It is her goal, if approved, to provide the best educational experience for students, families, and staff as the Director of Professional Development at Urbana School District 116.
Thank you. Well, I think that, thank you for that lovely reference, I think we're supposed to vote on that, and do I have a motion to approve hiring Ms. Truex for Director of Professional Development? Do I have a motion?
I make that motion?
Okay.
Second.
Motioned and seconded, I think roll call, please. Yes.
Member Exum.
Yes.
Member Patton.
Yes.
Member Plasky.
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, Vice President Hall.
Yes, motion passes.
Good.
Welcome aboard!
So Kelly is here tonight, so we'll invite her up just very briefly, and just let her say just a couple of words here. Markeisha, if you could turn the little mic back on for her. So Kelly Truex.
Hi, good evening, I'm Dr. Ivory Tatum and Board of Education. I am so excited, and I want to thank you for this opportunity. I truly enjoy professional development, and I'm looking forward to working with the team here in Urbana. When I met with them, it just felt really comfortable with me, and I felt like I could collaborate with them very well. So I look forward to working in Urbana, becoming an Urbana Tiger. And so I appreciate, I appreciate the interview, and I appreciate that you are hiring me as your Director of Professional Development.
And you have a guest?
And this is my husband, Skip Truex. He came with me tonight. So you'll see him a lot, because he comes, he comes with me a lot. When I was a principal, I'd drug him along for all those night events, and he did a lot of things, so he, he's used to that.
All right. Well, welcome, and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I look forward to being here Monday. Yes!
We do actually have one latecoming citizen statement, I believe, and I think probably, it's probably the fault of the weather, I would like to think. We have one citizen statement from David Guth. David, would you like to come up and, thank you?
Good evening, Vice President Hall and Member.
To Mike.
Good evening, wow, wow, okay. Good evening, Vice President Hall and Member, Dr. Ivory Tatum and members of the board. I'd just like to briefly comment, I noticed that facilities was on the agenda tonight, so as a previous member of the district facilities planning committee, I am hopeful that the district will renew its commitment to the completion of the upgrades at Wiley and Thomas Paine. While not on the current slate, as an active member of the UHS band boosters, would also like to request future consideration of an expansion and upgrade to the fine arts wing at Urbana High School. As one example, the award-winning Tiger Marching Band has grown in size from 60, 60 members to 114 members in just a few years, and we are far exceeding the rehearsal space that we need and store space, and the list goes on. Many families choose to stay in Urbana schools because of our high-quality fine arts programs, along with our theater program that just is going to the International Festival, which is awesome. But we want to stress that we consider the arts as core curriculum here in Urbana, and so I think we need to emphasize our strengths and really include that in our long-range facility plan. Both of those, those two key things, the elementarys that need to be upgraded, and the fine arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, now that we're on to the regular schedule of administrative reports, our first one will be the update on the administrative facilities, and Dr. Ivory Tatum will give us the update.
Okay, and I think Lori, maybe if you just want to run it from there, that's fine, we don't have to click. So David, very, you're right on time, because that's exactly what we're gonna talk about tonight. So, and I hope the board, I didn't get any questions, so I'm assuming you guys understood what I did with this. So this was the original Facilities Planning Committee report, presented by our own board member, Paul Palowski and Rachel, I, Dikma, Dikus, thank you, who co-chaired the 2016-17 Planning Committee. So what I did was took the original PowerPoint, Board Member Exum has not seen it, and just to refresh many of you, I mean, it has been three years almost, and I went into that original report and just made updates for the study session of where we are in the process. So this was the charge, we don't, I don't know that we need to read this, but the main charges were what is the best use of the space north of the high school, what are the options or solutions for relocating central office in the adult ed program, and is Urbana well-served by the number, size, and location of our elementary schools? The committee included representatives from basically the community, I'll, I'll show you the list. One of the things that happened at the very end of this is the committee was dismissed in April 2017, having met all the charges that they were presented with. These were the members, some are still in the district, some are not. They met for a whole school year, a really intense schedule, it looked like, so we appreciate that hard work, because they came, they got a lot accomplished in all those meetings. So I really want to spend more time talking about the recommendations of the committee. So the committee reached consensus on several charges. The first, the two elementary schools, Thomas Paine and Wiley, should be the highest priority to renovate, and following our plan for elementary renovations, that would include a gymnasium, HVAC, and dedicated fine arts spaces. Update 2020, I, we have been having several conversations just recently about how we're going to enter into this next year and, and start the process for Thomas Paine and Wiley. So the Thomas Paine renovation will be shared, our architects from IGW, Riley wasn't available tonight, but he'll be coming back on the 18th. There was a small planning, a little small group, when Sandy Cooper was still Principal at Thomas Paine, that had gathered a little bit with IGW. So Riley has some preliminary drawings that he'll share on the 18th, a preliminary budget, and just a little bit around the scope of what had been discussed in the past, and what we might do moving forward in the future. So no concept or anything like that, it is, is just a very beginning discussion. I'm gonna discuss Wiley in just, in just a few minutes as well. I've already talked with Principal Lloyd about a timeline for getting started with Thomas Paine as well, and Riley will talk about that on the 18th. We're going to be putting together a programming committee, and as you guys know, having sat through several renovations, the programming committee will include teachers, support staff, a fine arts person, so we'll make sure it is a very representative group of Thomas Paine stakeholders. So next, the Urbana population currently supports six elementary schools, seeking a new location for central office should be a priority, and that the committee should reconvene more frequently. So we're gonna talk about those first two in just a second. But in regard to the frequency of the meetings, I, I watched the YouTube video from 2017, and there was a lot of discussion at the end around how often the committee should meet, and the recommendation was that that full committee should be brought back every four to five years. So we're taking that as a recommendation and moving forward. It's been three years, so we didn't feel that we needed to bring the group back together. There has been a little movement along these recommendations since 2017, but not enough to bring the full committee together. So we will make sure we honor that charge of looking at that at least every five years. This is the slide around the UMS, UHS campus land use. We did have a presentation June 18th, if you look at the bottom, per the committee's recommendation, the district did contract with an outside consultant, Studio GC. You all, I believe Tori too, you were here for that in June. So the initial plan was presented to the board on June 18th. They've since come back maybe once, and met with the small facilities group, that includes John, myself, and Paul, but they will also be returning on February 18th to give us a little bit of an update around some of the, their vision for that UMS, UHS campus land use. So we'll have two facilities discussions. I know it is a, a business meeting, but because they weren't available to be here tonight, we're kind of, we're kind of having two study sessions this month, so. The next charge around central office and adult education, we're continuing to monitor centrally-located properties that align with the recommendations of the committee, that we want to make sure it is a priority for CO and adult ed. Keep the facility highly accessible to public transportation, one thing that we've talked a lot about is we, we really want to stay central. We want to stay in the downtown Urbana area, so people can get to us easily, so that is a high priority for us as well. So we can, Carol and I went to the TIFF meeting, John is our voting member last week, so we continue to stay in those spaces where properties are being discussed, and hopefully there will be some long-term replacement solution for central office soon on the horizon. So we're kind of continuing to monitor that as much as we can. Next is Urbana well-served by the number, size, and location of our elementary schools. So the first one there is adopt the ad alternate proposal for Yankee Ridge, to create a three-strand school to allow for opportunities for growth and flexibility. It was interesting listening to this, because originally, the ad alternate for Yankee Ridge was supposed to be, at least per the discussion held by the committee that night, prior to any discussion around French dual language, the original three-strand plan at Yankee Ridge was to help offset the staging that will be needed for Wiley due to the asbestos that we know is there at Wiley. So we will need to explore other options for this in the future, because as you all know, that those additional classrooms now house, house our French dual language program. So we will be looking at how can we incorporate some additional spaces at Thomas Paine to help us with the future staging of Wiley. Next is research demographic and enrollment data and long-range financial forecasting for an elementary school north of I-74. So again, we continue to monitor student enrollment, you have in front of you, that isn't in the slide, but I did give the board an update, you have two handouts, maybe three? I have given you numbers from 2016, yes, so September, and we, we typically use fall housing numbers, so anytime we share these kind of numbers with you, it is around that fall housing report. So number of students enrolled north of Perkins Road as of September 2016, and that same, well, not these same students, but September 19, 2019, the number of students north of Perkins Road. So you can see that, that has gone down, so in 2016, we had 456, 2019, now we have 271 students. But again, as, as we mentioned on the slide, we're continuing monitoring the land, that may go on sale, or may be made available for sale. I know there was a lot of discussion at the end of the facilities presentation around the district's motivation to continue to land bank when we have an opportunity for future growth. So that was something that was discussed, so we will continue to look at that, and when things come available to us, we will come to you guys and keep you apprised. The other handout that you have shows just some historical enrollment across the district, so we'll talk about that here next, when we talk about Wiley. The third charge here under are we well-served by the number of elementary schools we have, direct administration with input and participation from stakeholders to research specialized elementary education program possibilities for Wiley Elementary. So as we've mentioned in a previous slide, we have heard several times that Wiley does have significant asbestos, which will require us to have more of a staging plan, a transition plan, so, which really has kind of bumped the renovation for Thomas Paine above Wiley. One of the reasons we're doing that is we really want to have some time to work with the Wiley staff, I've met with the principal, Dr. Heinhorst, around what are some destination or programming, programs that we could bring to Wiley to really help with enrollment. So I'm gonna talk about these first, and then I'll show you the enrollment trend there. So Wiley is one of three elementary schools in the southeast part of town that share neighborhood boundaries. Wiley is centrally located, and within walking distance to a large portion of our community. We really need to leverage the central location of Wiley and research and investigate possibilities for a specialized school or program. So Kim and I, Kim unfortunately is at a conference this week, but Kim and I will work with Dr. Heinhorst to put together a committee to start investigating some of the factors and program options to help increase enrollment and support Wiley as a destination location. Some of the concepts or programs that the committee discussed, and Paul, you can interject since you were part of that committee, balanced calendar was one of the things mentioned, maybe a STEAM Academy, a language school, I added a couple here, International Back Laureate. I do know that there may be another federal grant opportunity for magnet possibilities coming up in 2020, so that might be something that the committee could explore, becoming a magnet theme-based campus as well. So on the next slide, one of the reasons why we really need to spend a year just doing some of that research, and looking at some programs, and how, how we can attract families to Wiley, if you look at that trend, you can see this year in 2020, when we ran this report with our fall housing numbers in September, at that time Wiley had 209, you can see there've been some ups and downs, and right now, we're kind of in a downward trend. I think right now, Dr. Heinhorst is here, but I think around 207 is about where you guys are right now. So they've been pretty steady around, I think there've been some points in the year they were 214. So again, we would spend a year really talking about these possibilities, and really kind of doing some think-tank work with the Wiley staff and stakeholders to really make it a very special place where people want to, you know, move into that neighborhood just so they can be part of the Wiley family. So that will be something that we'll, we'll put together that committee this spring, and they will be charged with coming up with some of those options, looking at research. Of course, anything that we do, we want to make sure that it is going to increase student achievements, and, and really have a really positive impact on the students that end up being there after we plan for their remodel and the transition and all of that. So building level priorities. So for the 2020 update, after reading and studying the committee's recommendations, this wasn't actually a slide where it was kind of listed out, 1, 2, 3, 4, but as I listened to the discussion following the meeting, these were the priorities that the board discussed following the presentation. So number one, finish Thomas Paine and Wiley renovations. Thomas Paine will again begin programming this spring, we'll hear more about that from IGW next time. We will have that committee with Wiley stakeholders, they'll spend the school year 2021 studying education program possibilities. The second priority was finding an alternate location for central office and adult ed. Third, continue the campus land use study for UMS and UHS, we'll hear more from them February 18th. And lastly, find and purchase land for possible growth north of I-74. So those are the four main priorities that we will continue to be charged with monitoring and bringing you updates as often as we can. And then next, this, I know it's really small numbers, but we wanted to put the slide in here, since this slide will be shared with the public. I will let Carol talk a little bit about future facility project planning, and we would be remiss without John being here if we did not talk about how are we going to pay for all these projects?
Well, hopefully, having this at your place helps, because you can see it a little closer. Just realizing, though, that in my effort to make this bigger, it cut off, so the word says available on the green, available project funds excluding, it cut off working cash bonds, so that green column is the funding excluding working cash bonds, and then we have the rolling three-year working cash, and the last column is available project funds including the rolling working cash. So just that rolling working cash word got, bottom line got cut off there. So those of you that were around in 2017, when we were talking about Yankee Ridge, you're familiar with this, this is what I presented to the board when we were talking about financing for Yankee Ridge, and I've just updated that. So as you know, we have our facility sales tax money, now that we have our 2002 bonds paid off, we were putting a million dollars of that sales tax money towards abating that old debt for the high school. So we've got that all paid off, so now we have more money that's able to go to the pay-as-you-go funding. We did utilize some of that money also for the future financing, so keep that in mind, it's not the full amount, we still are funding also with our sales tax, all the sales tax bonds we've sold for King and Early Childhood and those other projects that we did, that we sold sales tax bonds, and these funds are going to pay off those bonds as well. So this is the leftover money, after paying off those bonds that we've done previously, this is what's left over to use as what we always called pay-as-you-go, so things that we could pay for out of our fund, rather than going out and selling bonds to do it. The next source of money is the life safety levy, we do levy a nickel for that. I did put in the notes down here, for Thomas Paine, we've, we've completed all of our life safety, or we will be here as soon as the roofing is done at the high school and middle school, except for we deferred the Thomas Paine, because we knew that we were gonna be potentially doing that renovation, and there's roof work and HVAC work, and we didn't want to do that and then completely rip everything up. So that was deferred, so some of this money that you're seeing accumulating in the life safety column will have to be used to do that life safety work. So part of the Thomas Paine renovation dollars will be paid for from life safety. And we could possibly even, depending on what IGW thinks, we might be able to write for more things as we go through that, that would qualify, since we do have the funds available. We also have about 900, this is, I don't get to say this very often, we have $900,000 left over from our Yankee Ridge renovation. If you recall, the bids did come in less, so that was money that we sold bonds for, not knowing that, what the bids were gonna be, and we end up having money left over there. So that's great news to be able to have that and potentially utilize that toward future projects. So the green column is the combination of those first three, to kind of show you if you, if you don't want to use our three-year rolling working cash, that's what funds will be available, and that if we do use our three-year working, rolling working cash, we do that $3 million bond issue every three years, and a million of it goes towards technology, and 2 million of it has been going towards facilities. So started, the next one we do will be in 2022, so I've added that one in. We actually just did one in 2019, a lot of that money is already being spent, Randy will be coming back here within the next couple months for some other things that we're finding that we're gonna have to be doing probably this summer. So there may be, I mean, if the board is really needing more money, we could potentially pull some of that over, but we need to kind of look at what projects and, and priorities we have that we've already come up with, that we are more immediate, and make sure that we're not, you know, you don't want to cause problems in other buildings by using some of this working cash to do a major renovation. If you recall, that was the reason why we started doing these three-year working cash issues, is to kind of have a funding source for O&amp;M, to be able to keep up on repairs and things outside of the O&amp;M budget, so that we could prevent having to go out and do major issues like we did for Leo and the middle school and everything back in the old days. So anyway, this hopefully gives you an idea of how much we'll have, but you'll know more next, next board meeting about what the actual cost will be for these first renovations, but this will give you an idea for, we'll probably bring this back at that time and kind of see where it all fits in.
So looking at what Riley shared the last time, Thomas Paine was discussed, it was about 8.6 million, an $8.6 million project, but that was 2016 construction cost, so Riley is reworking those costs, and will bring those back to us on the 18th with 2020 costs included. So we know it will be more than 8.6, so.
So are there any questions, anything more you'd like to see? If there is anything you think of, just let me know, and we'll make sure we bring it back.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so we can have it ready when we talk a little bit more about Thomas Paine next time. Okay. And again, that was basically it. These last couple slides were just talking a little bit about the process, and this was a list of some of those other building need priorities, not so much district things. Some of these things, you know, we've addressed through facilities, projects in the last couple of years. And that is it. So questions? So if you guys, I've talked with John about this for quite a bit, so I am going to go ahead and move forward with Ms. Lloyd. She's starting to send me names of people who might be willing to participate on a programming committee at Thomas Paine. And again, Dr. Heinhorst is here in the audience, so we'll start working with her to put together a stakeholder group from Wiley to begin doing some of that research, and she's going to love that. She's a researcher at heart. So we're looking forward to really digging into that. And down the line, you know, as we talk about all of this, we will have to talk about that transition plan. You guys have been here since the Jewel Store, remember those, you know, when we had to use the Jewel Store and we had to use part of the middle school for King and things like that? So we will have to have some really creative conversations about, you know, when we get further down the line in the Thomas Paine project, how we're going to utilize spaces to address the asbestos need at Wiley. So that is much further down in the future. So our main two priorities are getting that design team started at Thomas Paine and really getting some conversation going around how we can really build a destination location program for Wiley. Okay? Thank you.
Well, you're not off the hook yet because...
Oh, yes, that's right.
Our next administrative report, Randy Ashman was here earlier, but he went home because he's not feeling well. He's going to present 7.2, the School Maintenance Project Grant, discuss that with us, but instead Dr. Ivy Tatum's going to take over for him.
So you guys have the menu, uh, men, uh, menu, the memo that Randy shared. Again, he is very disappointed. He was looking forward to his first opportunity to present to you tonight. So he's been working very closely with Carol around the School Maintenance Project Grant. It came to us pretty quickly, and it had a really speedy deadline. So the deadline for us to submit this is February 14th. Typically, we don't bring you a request and ask you to approve it all in one night, but because we don't want to miss this opportunity to be able to utilize these 50, this $50,000 grant, we quickly put something together, and Carol and Randy have been working to submit it. So I'll let, anything you want to share about Carol? I don't know.
We've had these before. We got one, I think in 2012 was the last time we had one, but anytime the opportunity comes up, obviously this is money we can, I always want to apply for them because if we don't get it, fine, but if we do, that's the $2,000 that we have. There's approximately 44 million available for this round, which is, sounds like a lot of money, but there'll be a lot of applications coming in from across the state. We are applying since we've already been doing roof work at the middle school. We still didn't have enough to finish it, so we thought, well, let's put in for some money for the middle school roof and try to get some more of that roof work done. So that's what we're applying for. We're doing the full 100,000 just so we can, it's a matching grant, so if it's a $100,000 grant you're applying for, the most you're going to get is 50, and then we would have to pay 50, but still cuts the cost of the project in half, so we're going to do it. We're still getting a couple bits of information just about the, when the current roof was installed, the copy of the application was at your place tonight, I hope? And we're going to apply, there's four different priority levels. One's an emergency and the other, the second highest priority is health, life, safety. So we thought, since the roofing is health, life, safety, we're going to also have to apply for a amendment. We have to actually do the amendment before we can submit the grant. So we'll be applying for a health, life, safety amendment for this as well, so that's why that's on the agenda too, because the board has to approve that. So IGW will go through and submit that for us. That's pretty much all there is to it. I think the memo explained what else we were doing, but we'll just keep our fingers crossed and hope that we get it. I think we should find out pretty quick. There was no information when they would have the awards, but I think it's within probably 30 to 60 days, we should find out.
And this would be summer, this would be work that we'd...
We'd have to bid it out pretty quickly and get it done this summer.
Question?
2012, but I don't remember, what did we get it for in 2012? Do you remember? I mean, was it a building, the life safety thing then too?
I don't remember.
Okay. I was thinking this was our first time, but obviously not.
No, we did get it.
Okay.
I can maybe look here because it's on the same website. If I find out, I'll let you know.
Yeah, thank you.
Was that roof, it just says here that the additions were completed in 1958 and 2003. Is that how old the roof is from 2003? Oh, wow, okay. About due for...
And there are sections that were worked on this summer, if you remember. There were big sections, but not the whole, so there's still some segments that have not been touched in quite some time, so. And we were going to do that work this summer anyway, so this is a great way for us to...
So it was like, what is it that we're planning on doing anyway? We might as well go ahead and write the grant for, so.
But you think there's a pretty good, there is a good chance that we'll get it?
Depends on who else applies. I mean, it's all based on a priority level, so there's so much money and they look at the grant, they look at every grant, they're going to prioritize them and start giving their 44 million out, and depends on where we fall in the list.
But again, a roof is kind of a high priority, and it is a life safety, so it might...
The only thing above it would be anybody that has emergency, what they consider emergency. That would be like if your boiler's completely dug, or you know, you have torn or something. Something like that. So I don't know if a lot of that is happening right now, so hopefully, hopefully we'd be in pretty good, pretty good shape to get one, I hope.
So that will be showing up later on in 9.5 as action to prove that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
That was the second administrative report. There's no policy review on tonight's agenda, so I guess we'll move straight into those action items. The first up is we had Clene Campbell coming to our last meeting to discuss financial assistance for the Minority Enrichment College Visit to the HBCU trip to North Carolina, I believe it was, that Clene had asked us about. So that's up for a vote tonight. I think we had somewhere paperwork just reminding of us. Oh, yes, okay. So the amount that was already, looks like the amount paid by students was in the realm of $5,800, and they received it just short of $800 in donations, but the students still own about $4,200, and the chaperones about 800, so the outstanding balance is about So I'm forgetting, are we supposed to take a vote on...
Well, and I don't know that we've decided on an actual amount, and again, that is a board decision, so we can talk about that and, you know, when we're, what your wishes are at this point. You guys just have to let us know.
Whatever we decide, I mean, I think we talked about this last time, is that, I mean, going forward, we want to have a set budget for these kinds of requests that is, you know, assessed and ranked through a group of stakeholders at the schools and administration before, you know, we become, come to here. So otherwise, we're going to have recurring expenses.
We have several groups right now that are fundraising, so yes.
And we want to be fair, because, you know, we responded to the request for the VCR, the Vocal Choral Group to go out to New York, and we were happy to do that and the attack group before that. So you don't want to just benefit the first come, first served. That's not the best way to go about this, so. I assume this agenda was just to formalize Ms. Campbell's request, so...
And you guys asked her to provide kind of an update of where she was, and so this was her sharing what they have left to raise.
So are we, were we deciding now whether we are planning on helping to fund this? We just don't, haven't decided on a dollar amount?
Yes, that's what I, that's...
So I'm assuming we need a motion then to vote on whether we want to do that or not? So do I have a motion on the floor to help give financial support to the Minority Enrichment College Visit?
I move financial support, but my question is, how much? And I don't remember what we approved for the Choral Group.
It was 7,000, I think?
From central, from central funds, not, because I know they solicited from individual...
Individual board members actually gave some of that too, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah, about five to 700, $600 from board members.
And I know Ms. Campbell solicited from individuals, including board members, but others, individuals as well, so I don't, I don't know if that's reflected in the outstanding balance.
That's reflected in the donations that she's received.
Okay. Well, we, okay, so we have one motion, but do we have a second motion to...
What's the full motion?
Well, it was kind of a half motion. I said I support financial assistance, but I didn't, the big question is, how much would we support? And I, that's why I wanted to know how much we had approved for the Choral Group. It sounds like that was seven, six, six or 7,000. Of course, that was a bigger ticket item too. And they continued to fundraise even after we approved that. I mean, I assume the college group will continue to fundraise.
Oh, I'm sure. I don't know, I think she has one more fundraiser planned, but...
Still some t-shirts.
And there's, yeah.
I can't remember when their trip was supposed to be.
It is February, the week of February 23rd, 22nd, so it's coming up.
So can we separate it out? Do we have just a motion to approve, yes, we will fundraise, and then a second motion to, I don't know, do we need to decide on them?
I think we have to decide on the dollar amount right now.
Right now?
Because they're not going to have time by our next meeting to pay for bills. They have to pay for these things ahead of time. So I would move that we would fund the full amount of 4,265, 50.
Good second.
Do we have any other discussion before we take a full vote on it, or?
Just reiterating that we really need to get this ironed out as to how we would handle future requests.
Yep.
I mean, at this point, we, it sounds like we're, we've, this will be our second or third approving what they're asking, but obviously we've got to be financially responsible and make sure that, you know, we're setting aside a budget line for this for future requests.
Carol, do we have some type of a balance in one of those?
There's, we have a budget line that we had years ago, but we don't budget anything. Haven't, since we made cuts years ago, we stopped budgeting for that.
So we're going to try and pull something from somewhere?
I'll take it out of the line that's set up that has zero budget because the board's approved it, but...
And that's what you did with the Choral Group too, so it'd be doing the same thing.
I mean, my, my question that I always ask the schools when they're doing this is, I mean, this is three weeks before they're supposed to leave, I think. It's like, I don't know why the fundraising doesn't start so far ahead of time that they wait until a month before they're supposed to go. I mean, that's...
Well, I think they have been fundraising, they've done, oh, she sent us the...
Yeah, they've done several.
Yes, they have done several. They did Culvers, Chipotle, t-shirts, I can't remember what the other...
They were going to do snow shoveling, but Winter didn't cooperate with them.
Yes.
Yeah.
Lori has all of the actual...
T-shirt and Culver's Share Night.
And Chipotle, I know.
The Choral Group did too. They have, you know, a big, you know, rummage sale at the middle school well advanced. The problem was they just get near the end where their, when their deposits are due, when their, when their bills are due, and they just don't have enough, and that's when they came here.
Well, this won't be the last one because I know there's others out there that are going for the same thing.
That's true. That's true.
So I'll work with you all on like what are some priorities, things like number of students. I know one thing that I think I'd be interested in is how many of the students are, fall under that free and reduced lunch status. I mean, I think to me, if you are trying, you know, there are students who have the ability to pay, and then I think the students who, she did send us a list of names, and I think the students who have the ability to pay have been paying all along, but then of course, we have some of our students who just, who want the opportunity, but just their families don't have the ability to pay. So I think that might be one of the criteria that we'd look at. And making sure, you know, Lori and I talked about this, making sure that they are doing their due diligence to fundraise too, not just to, you know, leave it up to us at the end to kind of not bail out, but help in the final hour. We want to make sure that they've been putting in the work too, all along.
I'm thinking in the future, we need to have people coming to us a lot sooner and we'll say, yeah, we'll give you 1,000. No, you need to pull the rest with your fundraising, or something along those lines. Because you just used the word bailout at the last moment, and I, and just against stuff like that. That's just my nature. So if they come early enough in the school year and they have some type of projection, and then we, the board, are going to release some funding, they will know ahead of time what they will be getting out of a fund, that we have to have a pot of money set aside for, and then they do the rest of their fundraising. And I'm going to, and on that, I'm going to go ahead and tell you, I'm going to vote no on this for the full amount when we still have a few more weeks that they could be fundraising, and that would be my reason why I will be saying no. I am not saying and voting that I'm not wanting to support this group. Make sure that is known. It's just the full amount that I'm going to, if we are saying right now tonight, it's going to be $4,265.50, I'm saying no.
So maybe what we could do is encourage her to continue to, this would be up to, but if they have more monies that come in, then that would lower the amount that we've, you know, there may be some parents who are still intending to, who've set aside money to give. I know some of the students have taken little part-time jobs that they're doing, and you know, working at the mall and things like that, so there may be monies that continue to come in. So maybe we're saying up to whatever their outstanding balance might be.
So I can amend the motion to say up to if the second agrees.
Okay.
Okay. Sound okay?
Okay.
So does that sound like a proper motion then, I guess? We need a roll call. Member Exum.
Yes.
Member Patton.
Yes.
Member Poloski.
Yes.
Member Fisher's still going to vote no, and Vice President Hall.
Yes. Motion passes. But we will look forward to hearing what kind of monies continues to come in for this group, and hopefully they get a lot more funding to come in so they can make their trip.
And we'd love to have a follow-up too, after the trip, maybe have the kids come in and...
Kind of like the Habitat group does. We'll have them come back and kind of en masse and have the students come and share their experience with you guys. I think that would be important, especially since there's so many juniors and seniors who are going with the aspiration to go to college, so.
Yeah.
I was going to also say, I know we have another theater group is actively, so their GoFundMe has been out, and so I will get in touch with them to make sure that they're doing some other, I've seen the link for the GoFundMe and that's about it, so I don't know what other fundraising things they're, they have planned, but I'll reach out to Mr. Broker and find out.
Thank you.
Oh, yep.
For the New York trip.
New York trip, yep.
Lots going on. Okay, moving on to personnel items. We have the approval of various personnel items requested. I don't know if there's any need for anything out of the ordinary?
I move acceptance of these personnel items.
Okay.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Roll call, please. Member Exum.
Yes.
Member Patton.
Yes.
Member Poloski.
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Hall.
Yes. We moved our administrative personnel item 9.3 up already, so next up is approval of the board travel expenses for the joint annual conference that was held in Chicago back in November that many of us attended this past fall, and I believe that the report was already submitted and up there in the front, so. We have a motion to approve.
I request approval of those for education travel expenses.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second up.
Moved in seconded. Roll call, please. We can... Member Exum.
Yes.
Member Patton.
Yes.
Member Poloski.
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, and President, Vice President Hall.
Yes. All right, 9.4, approval of the school maintenance grant, which is what we just talked about with Carol, so I'm done. Are there any more further questions? I guess do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved. Seconded.
Seconded.
Okay, roll call, please. Member Exum.
Yes.
Member Patton.
Yes.
Member Poloski.
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Hall.
Yes. And last but not least, well, this is a life safety amendment. Does this get rolled in? Should I have rolled this in with the one previously? This is separate?
Yes, separate.
Okay. Was there something to discuss on this one?
This is just, should we just discuss?
We have to do the amendment at the same time.
Same time, I'm sorry.
In order to qualify for entirety, too.
Following on with this, nine point six, approval of the life safety amendment for the, um, middle, middle school roof repairs.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Roll call, please.
Member Exum.
Yes.
Member Patton.
Yes.
Member Pulaski.
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Hall.
Yes. Motion passes. And I'm sorry, I should have said earlier, I was gonna do this as individual items because of the things like the funding and everything, so I didn't roll everything along the way. Okay, and then we have one study topic tonight. We have Cameron Williams, who's our Director of Marketing, to talk about the new district website. Welcome, Cameron.
And while Cameron's getting situated, I did want to highlight, I know Angie's not here, she's with her girls tonight. They're all, uh, there's a home basketball game and there was a big cheer camp, um, and so they're performing probably right now as we speak at the high school. Um, so she's gonna be joining us shortly. But I did want to highlight one retirement. I know we moved pretty quickly. So Mr. Bush, um, I know she was here earlier in the year for, for one of her, uh, award recognition moments. But officially now, when you see her, we can all congratulate her on her approved retirement effective May twenty-eighth. So congratulations to Mr. Bush. She'll be missed, but I know she wants to still stay involved in the district in some way, so.
I hope we see a lot of.
I just don't see her being.
Retired, right?
Old enough to be retiring, but I, I'm glad that, I'm glad that this is what she needs to do.
Yeah, she deserves it. She's, she, she does a lot and has for so many students, but, so a new adventure for her, so congratulations to Mr. Bush. All right, Mr. Williams. So Cameron, Director of Marketing, um, he's just gonna do a little show and tell tonight, so you have Chromebooks. If you want to kind of play around while Cameron is presenting, um, so I will turn it over to, to Mr. Williams.
Good evening, everybody. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so, um, I was talking to Dr. Aubrey Tatum last week, and we were just talking about a bunch of updates that, um, we've talked about, that I've done since I've been here, um, and just a couple of things that I want to do. So she thought it would be a good idea if we just came and kind of discussed that and then talked about moving forward with what we want to do. So I'm gonna be more general starting out, and then I'm gonna go to the website specifically because there are a bunch of changes that have happened in the past month, but also a lot to do, so I kind of want to let you all know about that. So, um, first and foremost, I thought it would be good to kind of talk about where we were when I first got here, um, which I think is really important. Um, so I put a couple of things here. From a communication and marketing perspective, these were a couple of issues that I saw when I first got here. So, um, minimal social media presence, um, the website was pretty hard to navigate when I first got here, though it was pretty minimal. Um, I, I would say it wasn't minimal in a great way. It was minimal in a difficult way to get around. Also, long pages of text. I know that's what a lot of parents first said when I got here. It's just a lot to have to read, especially when you're on your phone or an iPad, because most of them don't get on computers to look at things. Um, little to no cohesiveness with school digital platforms. When I, um, met Dr. Aubrey Tatum the first day, she came in and talked about that. That was one of the first things we said we wanted to discuss and tackle. Um, also, no branding. That's more marketing communication, no communication practice established. What I kind of mean by that is there wasn't, when I got here, a way to say, hey, this is how we as a district communicate. We do X, Y, and Z when this happens, other things when other things happen. So that's one thing that we're working on that I'm gonna talk about in a second, too. Um, also, no template for websites, so kind of going with that communication practice. There was no way to say, this is what is supposed to be on every website all the time. This is bare minimum. We can add things, but this is what has to be there. Um, and also no proper training for school-based users to update. One thing that I get all the time, and I probably got like six emails just this week about getting access to those websites so they can do it themselves, so I don't have to always go in. That is something that's gonna happen because I would love for it to happen, so I don't always have to go in and do it myself. Um, so that is one thing that's gonna happen, but I think first and foremost, we have to get the bare bones, and then we have to do the proper training to make sure that they know what goes where, when it has to go there, and all of those things. So since I've been here, one thing that I've done is met with administrators to discuss needs and skills. Um, every school is really different. I know we think just because we have so many elementary schools, it's gonna be the same exact thing on every site. Um, that's not really the case, so it's taken a lot of going in, coming back out, going in, talking about things to see what's gonna work and what's not gonna work, to see what are bare bones for each one, because Dr. King is different from Wiley, and Wiley is different from Niki Ridge, so that's one big thing. Um, working with Dr. Aubrey Tatum to discuss branding and typical communication. We meet every week. Um, we try to, to make sure that we go over certain things, and I always put questions in there so we can get certain things, um, rolling. Um, also, taking notes from great examples. One thing that we did before we wanted to go in and put a bare bones on our website and say, this is what we wanted to look like now moving forward, is looking at what other schools put up. Um, even meeting with Carol, one thing that we talked about was just seeing what they have there and how much we can put there and what would be good for us to put there as well, so. Um, also, tracking most used pages. One parent came up to me, and this is one thing I didn't even think about, even though I've done this before, is, um, seeing what parents always search for on our websites. So some pages barely even get visited, others get visited nearly every day. Um, so making sure that those huge pages are things that are there, and we have as much information, correct information, and information that doesn't have to be changed all the time, so it doesn't get outdated. Also, establishment of marketing communication parent committee. Um, this has been a really big saving grace. The committee is amazing. I will be reaching out to them again so we can start a meeting again to talk more about communication. Because even though we tackled a lot last semester, it's a lot more to talk about. Even during winter break, I was thinking of so much and writing it down, so things we could talk about when we come back to meet again. Um, but they were great because I think one thing that we were overlooking, um, even when I came in and tried to establish things, is that we're doing this for parents, um, for incoming parents and for parents who are already here, to make sure that whatever information they need is actually there. Um, and one thing that they even said was there wasn't a lot of listening to see. So even though you can come in and say, hey, every website needs this, this, and this, the parents are gonna say something completely different. And it's not being useful to them if we're just saying, this is what I'm gonna do and that's it, so we need to know. So one thing that they've been really helpful about is saying, we're looking for this at this time, we're looking for this at this time, and all this other stuff that's there, we don't really need, so take it down, put this up, and if you give us these three things, we'll be really happy. So that was one big thing that we discussed, and again, we'll continue discussing that, so.
Cameron, before you leave this page, what is website wipe down?
Oh, so that was one of the things, when I went in, when I first got here, it was just a lot of, um, no, I'll say, it was a lot of mess to have to clean up. Um, I was gonna try to be nice about it, but it was just a lot of mess to clean up. And I know even, um, for a lot of parents watching this, I know a lot of people were not happy with how I handled that. I was gonna say, well, yeah, by myself. Um, how I handled that, um, by taking everything down, but I thought it needed to happen, um, because it was just too much to have to redo and too much to have to go in and clean up. So one thing that I did do when I first got here is I just wiped everything clean. And one way the parent communication committee helped me is saying, we just need these couple of things. And instead of going in to fix sixty pages, take them all down and put those three things up and we'll be fine. So that's one thing we've done so far.
And Ann and Peggy are on your.
Yes, they are.
On your committee.
You run the wonderful committee.
Good, very good.
So, um, my main point for coming here tonight, again, was to kind of update you on everything we've done. So we have our, um, Chromebooks there. If you kind of want to look at that, I know some of them may close down. But if you're just on the webpage there, the first page, you can kind of look at everything. I pulled up the first page, so the homepage, things that people will see when they come visit USD one-one-six dot org. Um, you also have your about page and a couple of other pages to kind of show you, um, your template that you would have. So director's page is up, so most staff pages look like. Also, um, the principal page is up, so they have photos of every principal. I know that's one thing parents wanted to see. They just wanted to see what our principals look like and who they are and how to contact them, so that's up as well. Another thing is, um, our back pages. So one big thing that we changed about those pages, if you would like to go see the student registration page or anything like that, is, um, we just put basic information there, not a lot. Again, we didn't want to put a lot of information up about, um, links and a lot of the other pages, even some that are still up, are just big, long pages of hyperlinks, and that's all you have. So we shortened a lot of them. One thing we put on the side is because, again, everybody wants to see who they need to contact and talk to, is we have a staff photo, um, and then under that, we have quick links, so you can quick click on them, download any PDF, go to another page that you'll probably need to go to after viewing that page, um, and then we just have basic information on each page. Um, it looks pretty decent, um, on a desktop. It looks pretty simple, but it's a lot more simple when you're on your phone. Because, again, it's really hard to go through things and navigate them when you're on a small phone, and you have to read fifteen minutes' worth of text and hyperlink, so that's one big thing we changed. Also, um, with general layout here, with our main website, as you can see here and as you can probably see on your live versions there, um, we have a lot of material on our front page, but they're big, it's easy to navigate, we fixed the menu, we have a lot of quick links. We also have one big quick links page that people can go to and click literally every link that you would need to get to, so there's no confusion with that. Um, and then if you were to go on maybe UHS's website or UMS's or any other website, including Adult Ed, they kind of look exactly like our main site, so this is acting as a parent site, um, and then we have that cohesiveness with the rest of the sites as well. Um, so again, shorter pages with more links, um, more information or new information and back page layouts. And again, we have that quick, quick links page as well, as well, sorry. So those are our big updates we have there. Again, you can look around. I invite parents to look around. Um, a lot of people, staff parents, have stopped me in the hallway and said, it looks great, so I think everybody's happy with it. Um, I'm kind of a perfectionist, so I always find something every week to kind of change about it, so I'm not gonna change too much, but I will say anything that I will change will probably be for the better, so. Um, moving forward from that, just to kind of show you here, people who are watching online, sorry, I keep making that beep. Um, what you'll be able to view here is just a couple of things that I just mentioned. So what we have on the far left is our about page. That's gonna be a scrolling page. As we work on more marketing materials to kind of print and to give out to families as they move here, we just kind of wanted a good page to just kind of go over the gist of things, so that's one thing we have. And again, you can access a lot of things from our about page. On that top right corner, you have what a normal back page would look like. As you can see, Kim Norton is there. We have her photo. And you can't see her right now, but right under that, we have a bunch of quick links that you can click that you would need to know, probably about student registration or how many schools we have. Another thing that we do have is a schools page, so you can click on that page, be moved to each school, so it'd kind of be easier to get to the individual sites. And also in the middle, one big thing that we wanted to do, um, I realized that a lot of our pages is either cut or hot or cold. You either have a lot of text, or you have like literally one sentence there. Um, so I kind of changed that there to kind of look better, um, and also it's just a lot easier to navigate, as you can see with the calendars page there. And as more things come, and we get to two thousand twenty-two, things like that, it'll kind of, um, more fool there, so. Those are the big things that we changed. Again, I've talked with Dr. Aubrey Tatum about all of this before I usually push anything through. She approves it, so these are all things we sit down and talk about to make sure that we actually like, um, and that actually work. So another thing that we have here, the top left is Adult Ed, um, the top right is Urbana High School, and the middle is the middle school. So you can see how all of them kind of work together there. You're not seeing anything that doesn't go along with one another. Um, again, these are bare bones. Most of them just have banners scrolling at the top, that you can put their activities, anything, the updates. Um, you can take it down as you need to, fairly easy, and they will learn how to do this themselves, so it won't just be me doing it. Um, and then at the bottom, they have quick links, just like the main page, so. That's one big thing we did here. Um, I think our main reason that we wanted to meet tonight, too, is just like I said, we have a lot of pages coming through. As you can see, that's the quick links page. I don't want to spend too much time on it because I don't want to overtalk, but again, it's just a quick links page. You can access that from the main menu at the very top, at the very right corner. Um, and again, you can be taken to just about any page that we have of. And even the pages that aren't finished, that we're trying to work on and perfect, like our superintendent page, my own page, the communication page, tech team, things like that, you can access them. It's just gonna tell you that they're under construction right now. So all of those links are there. So if parents want to go in, even if you all wanted to go in and bookmark them, they're already there. Um, all the hyperlinks are pretty easy. If you want to see Board of Education, USD one-one-six dot org backslash BOE. So everything is pretty simple. Um, and again, just to update that Board of Education information, that was one of the big things that we wanted to do. One reason that I really wanted to come here tonight is to not only talk to you all, but to parents, and let you all know that this is something that's really gonna change, um, within the next week. One thing that we're gonna do with this page, not only change how the, you all look on this page, but also how everybody accesses agendas, um, financial information, things like that. So one thing that me and Dr. Aubrey Tatum talked about probably for like two weeks is to see how we can easy, easily put things up and how people can access them more easier. Um, so what we're gonna do is use a public drive moving forward. Um, I'm not going to actually push it through. Again, none of this has changed. Nobody can see this except me, um, and you, if you're just looking at this. But one thing that we're gonna do is to have those quick links, just like we have on every other page. And when people click them, they're gonna go to a drive that's gonna separate every meeting by date. When you click the date, it's gonna separate it by financials, agenda, approve things, so we're gonna have those same things there. But it's gonna be a lot easier to access, and once I get everything there and I spend an entire day clicking on everything to make sure it works, I'll push it through and we'll have that done, but you should see that change in, in about a week. So by Monday, that will be changed, so I just want to throw that out there and let everybody know, we're not trying to take anything away. We're just gonna change how you access that, and it will be better in the long run.
And Cameron and I really, um, found some, I, I would say exemplar. We, we really looked at a lot of sites, I mean, from school districts all over the country, um, and, and really found some exemplar websites that we modeled after, right? I mean, you know, great ideas aren't meant to be stolen. And so, um, and a lot of those districts are using Google Drives, and they, you know, each, each meeting is a folder, and everything is encompassed within that folder. Right now, we have those long pages. Um, so it'll just be more functional and, and easily accessible for people.
And I have tested that with other departments so far in other schools, so UHS, um, I talked to their counseling department. We're working on getting stuff up. They're gonna start using drives. HR, they already use drives, so staff information, things like that, pay dates and stuff, you go to a drive to download them, and everybody's been happy with it, no issues, so I have been initiating it here and there before we do this one, so. Just to let everybody know, it's gonna work, things fine. If it doesn't, it's Google's fault, not mine.
And in the spirit of transparency, when, again, as Cameron said, the reason we wanted him to come and say that publicly is when, you know, if things, you know, we don't want anyone to think we're hiding anything or we're not being transparent. Again, it is just a, in the spirit of functionality, um, and accessibility for everyone, um, we just, we need it to be different, so.
And lastly, I kind of wanted to talk about moving forward, what, um, we were going to do and what I wanted to work on. Um, so first and foremost, continuing polishing websites and adding needed information. Just like I kind of mentioned, we're talking, well, I was talking to the counseling department at UHS to discuss resources that we can put up, forms that we can put up, just to make it a lot easier. Um, I know for a lot of people, we all just want to get fewer calls throughout the day about things that can probably be fixed just by putting things online and parents having access to them, so that's our main goal. Again, none of this happens overnight, so I know I've been here for a couple of months, but it's just me, and I'm going to meet with them, and a lot of people have been very helpful, so I do want to say, for any staff members watching, thank you for everybody working with me and sitting down and, as pesky as I've been with putting things in the drive and fixing things, thank you for working with me with that. Um, again, we're gonna continue to find a need, um, through marketing and communication and parent meeting. Um, one thing that we've been doing, again, I know I told them when we initially met that we wanted to kind of split it up to talk about communication and then marketing, but I think moving forward, even for those of you on the committee who are listening, I want to continue to focus on communication because I think a big thing that we need to do just as a district is to have, um, a bare bones about how we want to communicate with everyone. Um, and we need to have something set in place, a plan, so that even ten years from now, if we need to revisit, we can and fix things. But right now, there just has to be a blueprint and there just has to be a standard. That's something we lack right now, but hopefully by May, we can have that, so we start strong in the summer moving to a new year. Um, also, setting up pages for parent resources. Um, we have the superintendent page again, on the communication page, where I'm gonna have things for staff and also parents. One big thing that parents want is to know where to go to look for certain things. A lot of them don't know what Skylard is. A lot of them don't know what Skyward is. They don't know how to go in and change things, so giving resources to you all to answer those questions. Also, technology, our technology department is gonna be the same, so we'll have those resources there. Um, and also using everything to set a standard, just kind of like I said, to move into the new year. Um, and this includes training, so I know I've sat down with a lot of people to say, if we want to use our social media accounts, if we want to use websites, we have to talk about what the standard, again, is and how we're gonna move forward doing that, just so we don't have any issues. So, um, those, that's my plan moving forward. That's what we've done so far, so.
Um, can I add one, two quick things? As Cameron said, he is the, by himself, so he's been having a lot of side-by-side conversations with administrators, um, and staff. He is going to be presenting at Winter Institute. We're gonna talk about Winter Institute here in a second in my superintendent report, but he, um, we're all about, um, giving people the power to do some of these things on their own. Um, and so Cameron is a great teacher and modeler for that. Um, but we, as, as Cameron mentioned in one of his earlier slides, we are going to work with an outside consultant on some of the branding things related to strategic planning. And, um, right now, we have no, um, print materials. We don't have like a district brochure, or the schools have a very, uh, basic Title I compact brochure. So, you know, now that Cameron has set a very. So, you know, now that Cameron has set a very clean design palette in relation to the website, we can take that same palette now and move it forward into some branding print materials. When Dr. Rome was here, he'd had some working cash money set aside for marketing and branding. So we do already have a budget that you guys approved in, when was that, Carol? 2019, 18? For the marketing money and working cash?
2018.
18. So we have, so we have a little money. So we don't have to go into debt to do this. But again, Cameron has been very hands on with the website, but, and he needs to stay focused with that as well as he works with me on crisis communication. You know, we're working on district communication plans, as he's mentioned. So we really need someone else to kind of come in now and pick up the visual print media part of that. So we're going to work with outside consultant to help us with that aspect. And then the one thing that Cameron and I have talked a lot about, and we've heard from a lot of parents, is about onboarding new families. So we're really going to work with the high school staff. I know Cameron's working with the counselors. But not just at the high school, at every level. When you're a new parent and you come to our district, we really want to make sure that you know what to do. And we heard from a lot of people this summer that that has not been their experience. So we want to make that new family experience better for people who are coming here for the first time. And we'll do that through the website, through print materials and things like that. So. Questions for?
Feedback is good, too. Anything that got me a star, wanted to add.
Oh, really? So, so I have, I just want to say, first of all, great job. I was one of those parents that was very frustrated with the initial website before you came and just finding things and so many outdated pages. And I know you've been working really hard. So we just want to first say we really appreciate all the hard work and effort, not only from you, but from the committee. Because I know you've met several times to get feedback and so forth. I just have a question for me as a parent. When I'm going in, I'm usually super strapped for time. And one thing I don't notice here, but maybe it's here, is a search box. And I don't know if that is something that's a possibility to not have to necessarily try to figure out what dropdown things are under, but to just be able to go and type in whatever it is I'm looking for, maybe possibly find that item. The other thing I was looking for, actually earlier today on the high school, and I don't know if it's the same for the other websites because I didn't visit those, was the staff and teacher email addresses.
Yes, we're working on that.
Okay. So I was looking for that. And sometimes I can just figure it out, but sometimes.
No, you're right. That is not there.
Yeah.
So if you look at the middle school staff page, we're working on getting something that looks similar. So right now, the middle school uses a live Google Drive link for the staff list that Dr. Weemail can go in and add and change as needed. So that is a work in progress that will be up for the high school.
Okay. And then the other thing, I don't know if this is, I mean, this, in my mind, it sounds like maybe it's more work than needed. But I'd love to see some historical announcements. So like for me, there are some days I miss the announcements now. And when I go to look, yesterday's announcements are gone today. So I don't know, even if it's just a short term amount, maybe a week's worth of announcements where I could click somewhere and see what the announcements were on Monday, for example, and today's Tuesday or from, if it's Friday and I want to see Monday, you know, to be able to see what was in the announcements that I missed.
Yeah.
Because those change from day to day. So again, I don't know how much work that is. That's the only part I miss about the email because I could not delete those emails. And then I could go back and say, you know, I could word search to see if something was, you know, put out and be able to find it and find deadlines and, you know, that sort of thing. So I miss that piece. Again, I don't know how much work that is.
Oh, we can do that.
But it'd be nice to have at least a little bit of historical. I don't necessarily need all of it, but a short amount.
Right now, we're doing it as like a static page. But if we wanted to do that, we could do it to where we set them up as post. And then they just refresh every week. So it starts fresh. But for a week's time, you'll be able to look back if that would be something.
Be helpful. So those are some things that I've noticed just as I was kind of looking around myself.
Yeah, that's good.
I don't know. Do the other schools, so I'm mainly on the high school page, obviously, because I have high school students. Do the other schools have announcements like the high school on their page or is it more so just the high school?
I think the high school for right now is the only one that does it.
Okay.
I think UMS has done it, but I think what she does now is she just sends them out as Word documents.
Okay.
But they don't put anything on the site. But they, UMS parents like the Word documents a lot better than having to go on the site, whereas UHS went it the other way around. So.
Okay. Thank you again for all the hard work.
I'll just tag on to what Tori was talking about, the summer school, summer assignments, classroom assignments for UHS. That was never updated. I mean, I remember this past summer, I looked and it was like 2018, summer 2018 assignments were still up there. But I don't know who controls that, if that's a high school thing or if that's a youth thing, but it does look really good. Thank you.
And that's a, again, that was a part of having a standard, because I know even our committee, we talked about when are you looking at summer homework? And knowing who to contact to tell them, hey, people are going to start looking at this point. Let's make sure this is updated. So that's one thing that comes with that territory. So.
But it's great. I mean, because I noticed that you have, you know, the course descriptions is great. Because I remember being on the committee with, with you and with Peggy and everybody else that one parent had said, we'd like to know in advance if we have a middle schooler who's moving on to the high school. If we have an elementary school kid who's moving on to the middle school and we want to think about what classes we might want our kids to sign up for because it does have a knock on effect, it's great to have those up on those websites so that they can plan with their kids. So, thank you. I really.
I have to say thank you to a parent for that because I put that up immediately once we found out it was out because of a parent. So.
That was, yeah. That, the committee's been great. We've had so much great feedback from parents who just, they have, they come at it from so many different angles, but they're all really, they really care a lot and they want to make, they don't just do it for their own kids. It sounds to me like the families who are involved with the committee really want Urbana to look great compared to other schools around us. So I've really enjoyed being, being a part of it. Thank you for all the work.
And we are committed to making sure the summer homework link works.
We are.
I was also frustrated. I don't know how many times I went to Cameron and he was just like, I just.
That's something I don't want to deal with another year or two. So.
Exactly. He heard about it so much.
I'm sure he did. Thank you.
I just have a question. Will the YouTube links that stream these meetings be part of the board folders? When you talk about each board meeting being in a separate folder, will the YouTube links to the meetings be part of that?
Right now, that's already in a playlist on YouTube. So what I'm going to kind of incorporate in that page that has those quick links is just that playlist. So that playlist is something I wouldn't have to touch again because it's automatically updated by YouTube TV. So we just have a link to where people could click it and go straight to it.
Okay. That's one question I've gotten repeatedly, that people have a hard time finding that, had, had a hard time finding that on our old website. You know, if they missed a meeting and they wanted to quick find it, but it sounds like it'll be easy thing. So. And again, thank you for, I think you run a wonderful meeting. I mean, I think you do a great job of synthesizing the views. You know, we have six to 10 parents maybe meeting and, you know, and everyone has lots of ideas. And I think you do a great job of making everyone's ideas feel welcome, kind of synthesizing what we can take and obviously putting them into effect, but also saying what's doable and what's not. I mean, you don't promise the world. You say, well, okay, this is what we can do. This is what doesn't make sense to do or what isn't a priority right now. And yet everyone feels like their ideas are really, are really important. So thank you. I think you do that. And wonderful agendas ahead of time and notes afterwards. So thank you so much. I think you've done a tremendous amount in your short time for the district. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm next. I'm next. I immediately am looking for attendance boundary area. I'm a ma, I like finite maps.
The map.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm so glad that it looks like each individual building has a link to at least the attendance area.
Yes.
There's two different attendance maps, though. There's the one that's on their main page and then there's a link within the verbiage and it takes you to a different map.
Okay.
The difference between them, I'm going to point out, is everything's color coded as to the areas and what schools they go to. But both maps are different with different colors and different areas. So picking one and then having the legend and saying, you know, the color, you know, this is for Lille and this area goes to Yankee Ridge, so on and so forth. If that could be.
Yes.
You know.
We can just have one.
One or the other.
Not too many colors there.
That would calm it down for somebody who is not going to be clicking on some of this stuff. And they go, okay, oh gosh, okay, this is about where I live, I think, type of deal. And does this goes in and out? I'm going to, going to the maps. I haven't gotten that far yet. I need to have a mouse instead of this little mouse pad to swirl around with this.
So you mean like, do they zoom in and everything?
Yes, zoom in, zoom out.
Oh, yes, yes.
And they'll be really detailed for streets and everything.
Yes.
Those are really high deal. Okay. The next thing is under about our school. It's like nostalgia time. And there's a lot of people, even when I'm on Facebook, everybody does ask about the different schools. If we, if there could be a section in there that would tell when that school was built, so on and so forth, and maybe someday, this is, this is way out there, though. Maybe someday even a list of each of the principals. Because people get on there. My, my 45th high school graduation is this year. And there are even people much older than me that are on Facebook and they do ask questions about it because it's a lot of memory lane for, for us old folks. And to be able to, somebody can say, go to the Urbana website. They've got so many neat things on there about maybe when you were in school and maybe you can't remember. Like, who was my principal when I was there? You know, back in 1942 or something of the sort. You know, as far as a high school goes, that's something way, way out there. But each school, I feel, needs to have that individualized, personalized type of nostalgia thing that goes with it. Once you're a tiger in this district, you're always a tiger, believe me. And we, we drink up this stuff as well. So if we could do it, I mean, kind of put it on there and maybe somebody can.
It's a summer project.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Somebody can pull that stuff out. I mean, even over the next year or two or whatever. That's just my thought process. So we can really make this fun for people that are no longer in school, but want to go reminisce. And good pictures of the outside of the buildings, so they can see how they've changed. Maybe a little bit of this, a little bit of that, older ones, so on and so forth. And we need to have historical stuff because Lincoln School, Thornburn, Weber are no longer erected. And any other type of little history thing, if it was just down in the corner and somebody said, oh, history, let's go look at that. And go, oh, this is so cool. Because there's all kinds of archives either at the university or at the libraries or whatever. But this would help personalize our stuff and somebody, instead of somebody having to go scroll through a whole bunch of other things.
Sounds like a great homecoming project. So.
When we put my glasses back on so I can see what I read. Don't have to tell that's bad. Color coordination. So I think that does it for me for the moment.
All right.
But I'm really loving this because even when I'm online, some nights and somebody, and my kids, oh my God. My kids will get busy typing, Mom, where do I find this on the website? And then I start going and I start getting so frustrated. You're going to have to just keep looking for yourself. Let me know if you find it. I'm still looking, you know, that type of thing. So this has been a little bit of an angst for me for several years. So this is so close to my idea on what I would be doing. So, you know, this is really a big thumbs up for you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks for indulging us with the Chromebooks tonight, too.
Yeah.
Be a little more interactive. So.
Thank you to Tech for the Chromebooks.
Thank you very much, Cameron.
Thanks, Cameron.
All right. Well, we have no call for future, do we have a call for future special or executive meetings?
We do have one tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow. That's right.
Discipline.
For the purposes of student discipline.
Student discipline.
It's tomorrow night. But beyond that, there are no others. So we're moving on to our superintendent's report.
Okay. So NAPID is Monday, February 10. I know this is tiny print, but again, the, we have links. Monday, February 10 is the 2020 National African American Parent Involvement Day. As you can see, there are activities going on basically in every school. We can send the link out. We do have a link that has more detail that Lori can share to all the board members. I have my day kind of planned out. I'm trying to hit as many events as I can on Monday. So a lot of good things going on, a lot of opportunities to engage families. And again, although it is called, I said this at Rotary today, although it is called National African American Parent Involvement Day, all parents are welcome to come and visit your classrooms, visit with your students. Stop in if you're an alumni. I told the Rotarians today, if you want to just go by and visit your old elementary school, this is a great day to do that. So Monday, February 10. Winter Institute is coming. We're really excited. We're happy to have Kelly and she's going to walk into kind of a pretty planned event next Friday. We've, you know, as you, as you heard, we've been without a director of professional development. So this has been a team lift. Basically, everyone over here has been involved in planning and recruiting. And I just want to thank all of our staff internally who have stepped up here at central office and just across the district to, to share presentations, to recruit people to present. It is going to be a wonderful event. We're really super happy about it. We, the booklet is there on the left. We have some amazing speakers. So at your places, you have, we have some outside presenters who are coming as well as some people right here in our community. So you have, I have the colored version that we're sharing via social media and online. But you guys have a black and white version. So one of our most noteworthy speakers is Todd Whitaker. I don't know if any of you have heard of Todd Whitaker, but I brought a couple of his books. He's going to be sharing, we're going to be Facebooking live with him on Friday. You're welcome to join us at the UMS gym at 8:15. He's going to be our keynote. That book there on the left, Teaching Matters, he is going to be working with us and talking to us about how to motivate and inspire yourself. So we'll be in the UMS gym, very much like opening day. So we'll just, everyone will be there, the whole district. Todd is a very engaging speaker. I've heard him before. And I think we'll all walk out with something that we can hold on to around motivating and inspiring ourselves. He is also going to, that second book there, What Great Teachers Do Differently. He'll be hosting a couple sessions in the UMS cafeteria around that. And then he's spending the lunch hour with our administrators. He, he presents on principal effectiveness, teacher leadership and staff motivation. So he's going to spend some time talking to our administrators about leadership and, and how they can shift the monkey. It's a really fun way of looking at those day to day managerial tasks that principals have to deal with. But he'll do it in a very engaging way. So we're super excited to have him and actually very lucky that he was even available when we reached out in December. For him to be available two months' notice is like unheard of. I mean, he's someone you have to get a year or two in advance. So he'd had a cancellation and, and he's right in Indiana. So he, he is a professor at Indiana State University, I believe. And so he's able to get to us pretty quickly. And so we're just really, really looking forward to him being here. So if you're in, available to sneak away and you want to come be part of that 8:15 to 9 o'clock time, you, I guarantee you won't be disappointed. And I will be going out to Thomas Paine, as you know. Mrs. Lloyd has tendered her resignation and she's going to be on and going back and working on her doctorate degree and venturing back into higher ed. So I, Angie and I will both be over at Thomas Paine, February 10. We'll be joining their staff and talking about what are they looking for in their next leader. And then on the same day, I will also be meeting with the PTA, having a similar conversation. We did this as well with early childhood earlier in January. So some of the things we talk about is, you know, what, what is their vision for the school? What, you know, are they looking for people who've been principals before? Do they want someone who has been a really high level elementary educator or does that matter? You know, how important is it to them that this person has experience in special education? So we'll throw some questions out and then just listen and they, they will share feedback with us. So we're looking forward to hearing from the. So, we're looking forward to hearing from the Thomas Paine community about their vision for their next principal. Nominate USD one one six teachers. So, on the back table, um, Lori has made copies of the C Schools Foundation Shining Star Award and the Napleton Teacher of the Year Award nominations are both open. So, we encourage you, uh, if you have a teacher um that you feel should be nominated, Cameron also has um up on Facebook, on our page, on Napleton's page. Um, we really want to uh get the word out because we have some amazing um staff members who deserve uh to be recognized. So, we want to start kind of pushing the word out about this early, earlier rather than later. And then last, I know, uh, we are getting ready to start our very first um engagement around strategic planning. So, you guys are all familiar with Thought Exchange, something the district has used in the past. So, we're going to be running our first engagement and we're trying something different. Um, people will still get the video, the um link to share their thoughts via an email. And then, of course, I'm trying to be in the Twenty First Century, so we also have the video, so no less. Hi, Tigers, USD family and friends. This is Dr. Aubrey Tatum, Superintendent of Urbana Schools. I'd like to invite you all to participate in this Thought Exchange to help us gather information about the current state of Urbana School District. In the next few screens, you'll have the chance to share your thoughts and ideas about what you value most and what you feel we need to change. And then, we ask that you consider and rate thoughts being shared by other students, staff, parents and community members. Your feedback will be used to help us prioritize our future strategic plans. So, thank you for participating and helping us make Urbana better together. So, the email will be going out soon, um, and we'll, we'll use the feedback that we get around those two questions. What are we doing well and what can we do better to help us set some strategic planning priorities? So, that'll be starting fairly soon. So, parents, you'll be getting that as well, as well as staff. Um, we'll be sending it to community members, students, staff, um, parents to to start, get that process started.
That's it. All right, thank you. Do we have any board reports to say things? Nope, no board reports, okay. Well, then I uh need a motion to uh recess before we go into closed session. So, moved?
I think you have, you're required to read the whole thing.
Oh, okay, I'm, thank you, Paul. That's right.
I read it earlier.
Okay, so I I need a motion to uh go into closed session for the purposes of collective negotiation matters between the district and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees and also for litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of our district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal or when the district finds an action is probable or imminent in which the case, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the closed meeting minutes. So, I have a motion. So, moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, it's a roll call, yep, you're right, thank you.
Member Exum?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Poloski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President, all.
Yes, meeting is uh in recess before closed?
All in favor.
Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, so the motion's carried. Now, we are recessed to go into closed session, thank you.